Good evening and welcome to Calistoga Planning Commission Regular Meeting, November 28, 2018. May we have a roll call, please?
Noted for the record that all commissioners are present.
Thank you very much. Would you all please rise to pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving to Item C, Public Comments. Public comments is an opportunity to address the Planning Commission on items of interest to the public that do not appear on the agenda. Comments should be limited to three minutes. The Commission cannot consider any issue or take action on items raised during public comment. Does anyone have anything they'd like to come up and say in the interest of the community? Seeing none, we'll move on to adoption of the meeting agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to E, Communications and Correspondence. Staff?
We received one letter since distribution of the packet from Peter Hurd and Marshall Seymour. I emailed that to you and also have provided you with hard copies this evening.
Thank you very much.
It's regarding the public hearing item.
And there are copies to the --
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Public hearing, we're down there already. To F, consideration, excuse me, public hearing, Calistoga Hills Resort Project Use Permit Amendment for the location of accessory structures and uses, UP 2018-2, and vesting tentative map amendment to expand the project boundary at 411 and 515 Foothill Boulevard, AP numbers 011-310-046, SEQA addendum to the Enchanted Resorts EIR. Staff, my understanding you would like to do your presentation first and then we would ask the applicant then to come up after you?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
That's what I would recommend, just to provide the Commission with an overview and for the benefit of members of the public who weren't involved in the original project review. So I'm just going to give some background and also give some highlights of the proposed changes and then applicant will add on to that. He's also got some slides to share. So this is a general vicinity map of the two addresses and Foothill Boulevard runs along the northern, or sometimes people would consider it the eastern boundary of the project, and then it rises up to the ridge line here. The approved project back in 2012 was 110, up to 110 hotel units, 20 residence club units, 13 custom residences, and then other amenities such as a restaurant, spa, parking, accessory support facilities, and also a vesting tentative map was approved for the 88 acres to divide it into various lots. This is the approved site plan and the -- all of these exhibits flip what the vicinity map was, so north is now at the bottom, but this is Foothill Boulevard here and then the ridge line is up at the top. So just zeroing in on the approved resort uses is a cluster of residence club buildings, the resort buildings, the resort core spa, and then what we're focused on tonight are some of the ancillary uses that were approved, such typically called back-of-house maintenance kind of services, the parking lot, and also an office building that was proposed in this So progress to date on the project is construction of Madrone Drive, which is a good portion of it, which is the road you see winding up from Foothill Boulevard, emergency fire access roads, installation of on and off-site structures such as the construction of the Pine Street lift station, replacement of the Washington Street sewer trunk line, landscaping, and implementation of a portion of the timber harvest plan. A lot of these improvements you can't see from off-site, but you'll be seeing some slides. So they have progressed on certain improvements. You have this in your packet. This is generally in yellow. It highlights the road improvements that have been done to date and this area -- whoops, sorry. This area is 12.32 acres. That was added through a lotline adjustment that was approved a few years ago. It was purchased from Degardia and so some of these drawings call it the Degardia Service Center that we're talking about tonight. So it joins the main project that was approved in 2012. Also, we'll be talking about this property right here, which is part of the ownership of the Bingham Ranch, and that's owned by the people who submitted that letter. So in general, this proposal would amend the use permit to relocate this service facility building up here, the parking lot and the offices, and then some of the service uses that are associated with the hotel, and it would relocate them to this area on the land that was purchased and subsumed into the main project site. And just in general, it would relocate the wine caves, the offices, housekeeping and laundry, what's called engineering, the shop, storage and offices, employee facilities, receiving and purchasing, and then miscellaneous, including the parking facilities, water tanks, the electric cart storage, and charging station. So this would be a representation of what was approved for disturbance as part of the original project. There's going to be an access road going through here to complete the fire access loop so that there is access all around the property, and this area here would be affected by the proposed relocated improvements. And then this is just an overview of the parking lot, water tanks. This is employee parking. This is valet parking and several buildings for maintenance of the vehicles, et cetera, and then possible caves into the hillside. So as I mentioned, there has been some concern about possible ability to screen these improvements from a designated scenic highway, which is designated in the Calistoga General Plan. If for some reason the trees on this property were thinned out or removed voluntarily or involuntarily, it would obviously require approval by the city at some level, but there was concern that those, the proposed relocated improvements would then be visible from the scenic highway, which is located down below, as well as other locations in the valley. So we are recommending an additional condition of approval, which I've given you copies of tonight, and this would provide that the final improvement plans for this area include an evergreen landscaping buffer screening, and it goes on to say sufficient heightened density to screen the improvements from the scenic corridor, and it has to be maintained throughout the life of the project. And then I also suggested adding that alternative measures could be done in the interim while the trees are growing to their full height or the height that's necessary to screen the improvements. And as detailed in the staff report, the general plan designates this property as rural residential hillside, which is the same designation as the resort itself. Visitor accommodations are allowed in this designation. The structures and uses proposed for relocation are accessory to and in support of residences and visitor accommodations, which would be consistent with this designation. There are no general plan entry corridor or character area overlays that apply to the service center area. This project is also consistent with the zoning code. It's similar in use to other uses that are allowed by use permit in the rural residential hillside district, such as religious institutions, public facilities, contractor storage yards. For example, a religious institution could potentially require a substantial amount of parking, similar to the proposed parking area. Both a contractor storage yard and a public corporation yard could require similar activities and indoor/outdoor storage, similar to the back-of-house buildings that are proposed. And the Calistoga Municipal Code allows for the establishment of new accessory buildings and structures in this zoning district through approval of an administrative use permit. Due to the size and number of structures proposed to be relocated, I have determined that it should be referred to the Planning Commission for its review. And a recommended condition of approval would prohibit construction of the accessory structures until construction has commenced on the property's primary use so that they would, in fact, be accessory structures. The final designs are subject to design review approval guided by the adopted Enchanted Resorts Development Standards and Design Guidelines. In terms of vesting tentative map, there are revisions proposed to the original approved tentative map to incorporate the 12.32 acres, and there's also some revisions required to reflect the new project name, the total acreage, the physical boundaries of the area to be added, and revised onsite circulation and utility locations, which have been evolving as the project has been constructed. In terms of environmental review, an addendum to the previously certified final EIR for the Enchanted Resorts project has been prepared. An addendum is allowed under SEQA if the proposed modifications to the original project are not substantial changes to the approved project, would not cause any new significant impact, and would not substantially increase the severity of a previously identified significant impact that would require major revisions to the FEIR, the final EIR. And we did do an initial study, the consultant did, and the addendum concluded that all potential environmental impacts would be the same or nearly equivalent to the impacts previously analyzed, and there have been no changes in the environmental conditions on the property not contemplated and analyzed in the final EIR that would result in new or substantially more severe environmental impacts. The proposed project would be required to implement all of the adopted final EIR mitigation measures. I've highlighted some of the potential impacts that are discussed in the addendum and the conclusions about that analysis, and we're very fortunate tonight to have two representatives from the environmental consultant that prepared the original EIR. And so if you have questions about the addendum, they are available. The findings that are necessary to approve the use permit and the addendum to the EIR are included in the two resolutions that are recommended for adoption. The first one, adopt the addendum to the EIR, and then if you approve that resolution, then it's recommended that you approve the resolution for the use permit amendment and amendments to the vesting tentative map with the additional condition of approval that has been distributed to you tonight. I also just wanted to remind you that before you participate in the review of this item, that you should disclose any communications you had with applicant or the public. So that, behalf of the answer questions, and just keeping in mind that the applicant will also be making a presentation about the project.
Thank you. Staff, I'm sorry, commissioner, you have any questions of staff? None?
Just to be clear, there's no additional square footage? Just going to be completely transported to the new?
It's a rearrangement of basically what was approved. Yes.
And to answer your question, I'll ask the question, has anyone here, any of the commissioners, had any communications with the applicant? Obviously, I have had communication with staff and talking about this, but I have not sat down and had any formal discussions of any kind with the commissioners and myself. So if anyone else has anything, just so we are clear about that?
I did go out and visit the property to see the existing, the current work, and also the new location that this is being proposed for.
I also got a driving tour myself.
Yes, and I have been to the site twice with Erin. I have also, just in the last few days, communicated by email with Erin with both a couple of questions and noting specifically one of my concerns.
Thank you.
I too did an automobile tour of the site.
Okay, thank you very much. That being said, if the applicant would like to come up and give their presentation, that would be great.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. Thank you for having us this evening. My name is Aaron Harkin. I am the project manager for the Calistoga Hills Development Team. I am here along with part of my team, which includes Diane Kinderman here of Abbott and Kinderman Law Firm, John Williams and Kate Ferland of Environmental Resource Solutions doing our forestry management, and Jason Kirchman of BKF Engineers. As you're aware, our project was approved a few years back, and since then, we've been steadily progressing on our construction efforts. After the resort was approved, we were able to acquire some additional lands, as Lynn pointed out here, adjacent to the project. As a part of that transaction, we were able to get a lotline approval from the city to incorporate these lands into the overall project. So we went from 88 acres originally to now 100 acres in total. We know that parking, garbage, deliveries, and back-of-house are all unsightly components of a project like this, so our objective is to simply move these already approved components and activities down the hill to these new lands such that it does not detract from the guest experience. This will allow us to add some additional breathing room up on the ridge line and to space out our structures to enhance the overall forest aesthetic. Therefore, we are here this evening to seek approvals for allowing us to relocate the previously already approved accessory structures and uses, amend our vesting tentative map to be in concert with our already approved lotline, and certify the associated environmental SEQA review. Moreover, let me be very clear. All conditions, as Lynn also stated, all conditions of approval, use permit, design guidelines, development standards, mitigation measures certified as part of the resort will also continue to be in effect for these new lands. We are not seeking any new uses or structures, and specifically, we're not asking for additional hotel units or along the ridge line. These approvals simply make the resort endeavor a better overall project, as not only do we continue to hide the parking and back-of-house facilities from the community at large, but then also we hide this component within the site so that it cannot be seen by guests and therefore create a better product. Additionally, circulation is improved in that as part of our original entitlements, we had an easement taking us down through this backside here and out to Highway 29. With these approvals, we create a loop system such that what the circulation of the project is circulating throughout the site, and we have a better egress out to the Highway 29 in case of an emergency. Our main project entrance will continue to be our only point of access, and all vehicles that come to the site will go through our main point of entry here, with guests continuing up the hill, up to the ridge line, with deliveries, garbage, food, et cetera, all coming to the back-of-house facility here. I understand that there's some recent concerns of our recent construction activities in that we reinstalled the driveway through our neighbor's Degardia family, starting from here going down to Highway 29. At this point is where we have our connection to the city utilities. So we made those connections, and by doing that, we did the trenching work and then repaved the driveway going back up to this point right here. Again, that is, that access there is only in case of an emergency and will not ever be used other than for an emergency situation. All resort activity goes through our main entrance of the project here. So it's been a little while since we got our approvals, and I thought I would share with you a few pictures of what we've been up to. As part of our contract with the city, we not only made in lieu cash contributions, but then we also made infrastructure contributions. Part of that was to install a sewer line going from the back, behind the Vermile Clinic, across Washington Street, down the fairway extension, back across the ballpark, ballyard there, over to the bike path, and all the way down to the treatment plant, a little over a mile of sewer infrastructure, which is the vital artery of town. That was part of our contribution to the community. Additionally, we installed a sewer line all the way up and down Pine Street and installed a lift station there at the end of the street, which would take care of all the affluent from all the houses up and down Cedar Street and Pine, essentially taking care of that entire corridor of town. After that, we started on our roadway infrastructure, and presumably everyone in town saw our entrance, as the dirt showed there is where we got started, but now we're up into the hillside and building our roads. Because it's a forested hillside with tight working quarters, it's a very sequential process and it takes time. We can't attack from all different angles if it was a flat site like our friends across town. You can see here, we have part of our road building efforts here with retaining walls and working in and around trees. We've done substantial efforts to work within the hillside and saving trees throughout. We have a culvert crossing here, which was pointed to earlier. And you can see here, we've got paving going up Madrone, which is our main artery up to the top of the hill, essentially getting us to the ridge line. The next year, we have one more year of infrastructure work along the ridge line, and then we go vertical with our buildings. See here, this is our back service road that's been recently built, along with some finished roadway going up the hill. And so this is a little video of some of my amateur drone work that give you a little insights as to the feeling of the roadway. So unfortunately, I could not, I was not tech savvy to put some nice elevator music to this, so you'll just have to listen to me as we go up the hairpin turns here. Again, I'm really bad at drone work, as the young kids with all the video games are obviously much more skilled than me, but hopefully it starts to give you a flavor of as you progress up the hillside here. So you go past those two hairpin turns that folks can see from Highway 29, and as we start to get into the forest, this right-hand turn here is where that crossing is at, as you can see our culvert down below, and you can see the soils on top of that, which we'll be able to replant those above that culvert, allowing us to make that a nice little corridor there, as opposed to doing a traditional span bridge. So here, obviously, you can get a new sense of being in the forest. And unfortunately, I was trying to get this thing onto the speed mode, but again, forgive me for my limited drone stuff, as I've had a few accidents with it already. So that's actually me standing there. So I started it off at the entrance and zoomed up over my head. So it continues to go up the ridge line here. That's the ancillary road that goes to the backside of the property where we'll have some additional estate lots, but guests continue up this avenue here. Get a little bit of sunshine. This is kind of an interesting little spot as I have some of the workers coming at me, as you'll see here in a moment. So made it past the truck without getting ran over, but you can see here the intimacy of how the road intertwines with the trees as trees still continue to hang over the roadway, which again makes the drone efforts pretty exciting. It's not just an open, clear pathway. You get a little flavor of how the driveway interacts with the hillside as we specifically moved the road over a touch in order to build fill walls and maintain the cut side on the right-hand side, that natural aesthetic to the greatest extent possible. So coming up here is where I had a little accident, but it caught itself. That's why you pay the big bucks for those machines. It, yeah, it caught itself and reestablished, and I got through my heart attack, and there we go. So Lynn could kindly take me back to the PowerPoint there.
Don't give up your day job.
Right?
Yeah.
I have people coming up to me all the time, asking me to do drone work, and it's like, I want somebody to teach me, not just to take my job over. But getting back to focusing again here on the application, so folks, we'll start off at Highway 29 here and navigate up the hillside. As you can see here, this is a view looking towards town, and this is that crossing that was just mentioned right here. But you can see essentially, this is the four acres associated with this parking facility. We'll have some additional wayfinding so that guests continue to go up the hill, and then, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be planting right here on top of the bridge. We specifically designed it that way so that we have a nice little corridor here so that essentially only those people that know to go back over here, i.e. garbage, food, delivery, et cetera, will go over there. This is a little bit more of an acute visual here. As you can see, the outline of the proposed parking area, but you can see specifically the elevation of the vehicles on 29 and the dense forest in between as this is elevated up above. Here's an opposing view looking back, as we had some open area here, and this is how we got to build our service road going up to the hill. So as I stated before, we are not asking for anything new or anything more. Rather, we are simply asking to be allowed to move already approved elements of this project down the hill. We are not seeking any new uses or any new hotel units. Moving the parking down the hill gives us a more breathing room along the ridge line to reduce density and makes this an overall better project. We appreciate your consideration of our application, and we ask for your support and approval. Thank you. Should you have any questions, obviously, I hope to be able to answer along with my team.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant before I open the public hearing?
I will have.
You want to hold them till later, Tim?
No.
Would you like to?
Yeah, a couple things.
Sure.
Aaron, the, first thing I want to mention, you know, it calls for, in this process, the potential removal in your forester program of 219 trees. The question I have is, in the previous location for it, what I'll call the approved location at the top of the ridge, has your tree removal program made it up to that area yet? Have you already removed trees where the parking was originally?
No, we have not. We have not touched--
So you haven't done that yet?
No.
So, understanding that as you progress, you're going to, you know, move the chess pieces, as you have sort of more-- as you have sort of more land to work with up there, is it fair to say that probably in the end, you're gonna have a quid pro quo of trees, tree removal?
Well, in terms of, at the end of the day, the net benefit of trees, in the sense that we'll be taking down less down at the bottom of the hill than we would up at the top of the hill.
That was my, yeah, so.
And I have the experts here that can obviously speak to it much more.
Right, you didn't mention that in the environmental analysis, and I thought, well, this is...
We specifically did not want to get into that, because in essence, the four acres associated with what would be arguably up on the ridge line.
Right.
Moving that down, the exact definition of those parameters have been a little bit fluid. So we essentially took where we know that those, that tree would be, those trees would be removed, and did our analysis as such. And I'd be happy to bring our forester up here to speak to that in more detail, if you'd like.
Well, we don't need to, but I, I mean, I don't need to, but the, just for realization, there's, it is fair to us then to look forward to the fact that in the net finished program, you will actually have potentially removed fewer trees with this relocation.
Well, not only fewer trees, but again, I'll just steal our forester's words here, in the sense that the tree stand is different on the top of the hill than it is down below. Down below, it was an old abandoned orchard, so the trees down there have a lower, they do not have as much growth, and there's much more understory there, as opposed to up on the top of the hill, where those trees are much more mature. So therefore, in essence, those trees that are down at the lower level is part of the forest management efforts that we would have to do clearing anyway. And so, in essence, by moving this parking down, we're taking out, in essence, less desirable trees, rather than what would be up on the ridge line.
Okay. My second question is dealing with, and I think is the genesis of the potential additional conditions. I was quite concerned in the revised, the addendum in the environmental report, and it will just read here, that the statement in the environmental report is, "The relocated buildings would not be visible from any parts of Calistoga because they would be screened by vegetation." And I've never seen in a site analysis like this, where you are relying for mitigation for your project, you're relying on somebody else's property and somebody else's trees.
Right, well, I guess I can speak to that in a couple of ways, in the sense that the conditions that Lynn put forth, we were already planning to do, so we're happy to accept that. In addition to those lands, you know, for lack of better terms, are landlocked. Those trees, to do anything on those properties, other than, God forbid, a fire to take place, we'd A, have to go through a process of approvals through the city, but then B, would need access through our properties to get there. So there's no, there's no way that those properties can be developed such that tree removal would take place. Now, fire, obviously, is a much different circumstance.
I understand that, but I, it's still a concern that you're proposing a mitigation by using somebody else's property. And as it stands here, it seems appropriate that in this addendum, there should have been a discussion as to what you propose to do to mitigate onsite for the potential of a fire, or something like that, that if those trees went away for any reason, you know, this still needs to be mitigated. I, as, and don't get me wrong, I am, the idea of having the backhouse facilities moved, I, you know, I think is a smart move in terms of the plan of the resort, and I think in the long run, it works better on a lot of sort of mechanical basis.
Yeah.
I am, I still have a couple of concerns. I know that, you know, trash trucks tend to show up at 4:00 in the morning, that probably won't get any loud claps from the binghams, but, or your guests for that matter. But, but still, I think that we need to be satisfied that, that the visual aesthetic of not seeing any of those facilities from the highway is something that is mitigated within your property. A couple of suggestions I would have is that, is that perhaps we could, you could develop and submit to staff, and maybe staff could circulate by email to us, a conceptual, more detailed idea of what happens between the edge of pavement and the top of slope, and the bottom of slope, in terms of what might happen there for planting. And also, in between the two layers of parking, planting that will take care of the upper retaining portions. If you could develop something conceptually that we had as a benchmark to sort of measure by, that would be worthwhile. The second thing is, is that seeing the refinished road and the retaining that you have, I would hope that, and assuming you will be using the same shotcrete process on your retaining, I would hope that the shotcrete on this new section would be significantly darker than what you used before. The darker it is, the more it just goes away. And, and you don't have to wait for vines to grow on it, it's gone right away. So we will get to the conditions, because I've got a couple of notes, perhaps language issues that we get to that, but I was concerned about that, and I remain concerned about it, and I'm hoping for a commitment that this will not be a problem. And as this gets changed in the amendment, I would suggest that as we may approve, if we approve the addendum to the EIR, that language gets changed in the, in this addendum, to specifically address the onsite mitigation for aesthetics.
Sure. No, I'm happy to, again, take on the condition that Lynn had proposed in terms of doing that additional planting, but it's actually planting that we're required to do anyway, as it relates to the area between where our travelway is at and the existing forest, that area has to be replanted as part of our overall project conditions.
Well, and I appreciate that. But still, it's being pointed out as a mitigation under the title of aesthetics in the environmental document. I think it needs to be addressed in the environmental document, under aesthetics. Understanding that you're required to do that, I think that the public needs satisfaction that mitigation has been addressed as part of a final EIR addendum.
Sure. No, like I said, I don't want to speak for the EIR experts that we have here, but, you know, as it relates to planting, we're all for it. I mean, that's a part of our mantra, and what we, what we want to do is, again, hide that. So what you're proposing is definitely in line with what our objectives are, so we don't have any problems with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Well, I suppose, since you're standing there, I could ask my questions now. The letter that we received from the neighbors, I assume you've read it, and I wanted to see if you could take the opportunity to address some of those, the issues that came up. Some of them were specific to their relationship with you as neighbors, trespassing, fencing, and easement access. Can you, can you respond to those items pretty upfront to?
Right, so they have a document from 1964 that is a deed that says access. We acknowledge that, and nothing more. They do not have any meets or bounds defined, or any approach to that access. We've been neighborly with them to do so, but there's nothing beyond that that needs to be identified as it is a private matter. Moreover, the suggestions being made as to their adjacent property, it has sat there, at least in my tenure of 20 years, vacant this entire time, as they've never asked for access, other than just to simply see the property. But nonetheless, we want to continue to be neighborly, as we are with all folks throughout town, and, you know, accommodate their needs. As it relates to a fence, we have not suggested a fence, because it's wildlife corridor, that, you know, we're, we don't want to put up more fence than necessary, but if it's something that we're told we need to do, then we'll deal with it.
Anyone else? Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. I will open it up to anyone who would like to come forward and speak. If you could, if your questions that you're going to ask have already been asked, it would be good of you not to ask them again, or we could be here all night. So, that being said, this is a public hearing, so.
Chair Coats.
Yes.
I'm sorry, could I just tell you that I'll be keeping a record of all the questions, and that I suggest that if there are a lot, that we just, I'll summarize them at the end, and the applicant can answer, and the environmental consultant, I can, you know, so, rather than getting into possible back and forth. So I will keep track of any questions that arise.
Very good, thank you. Okay. Anyone like to come up?
Carrie Abreu, 1720 Reynard Lane. My mother is across the street at 304 Foothill Boulevard from this project. Thank you to Commissioner Coats, Chair Coats, and all the rest of the commissioners. I'm just gonna read this, it's a few things that I've thought about since this project came to existence. Calistoga Hills, formerly known as Enchanted Resort, applied and through a referendum put on the ballot, received approval of an 80-acre, 88-acre piece of land from the City of Calistoga Council. The hillside, where the road is, was basically raped and cleared. For the road up the mountain, it defies logic, thinking that any engineer or layperson, such as myself, how it could actually be used, not just as a daily drive for guests, but to arrive at the destination, but expecting it to be used for delivery trucks, party vans, picking up guests to go wine tasting, and in reality, hardly accessible by personnel, by fire personnel because of the grade. So after done, the owners needed to look for another access or egress. So they purchased 12.32 acres to the north, and now come to amend their use permit to move their auxiliary and accessory structures. Food deliveries, special event delivery trucks, buses, all to keep the working components of the resort away from the guest accommodations. Nowhere, even, I just added, in Lynn's report or in Aaron's, does it show that the road to the said property across from Pine Street? It doesn't even show that road, except for, oh, and that's only going to be used for emergency. Does that mean moving all the buildings is going to have all of those people driving on that windy road every day? Well, probably until the first garbage truck meets a guest, and that road's so narrow, and there's an accident, and then that'll all change. The EIR was done on 88 acres, period, not including new lot line adjustments to make a large parcel, and that should not be accepted. Here, the scope of this project is large, and getting bigger, since they've also acquired the seven-plus acres south of their project, that ends up dumping onto 29, near Diamond Mountain Road. A separate EIR should be mandated, as the southern property has certified petrified forest wood on that property and should be protected. The EIR subsequently was done in August, the original one, the driest month of the year, no water runoff ever spoken of, or how it will be mitigated. Now with the Brown Welch winery approval, and a new entrance for service trying to be established for Calistoga Hills, you cannot tell the public, there will be no negative traffic declaration. Because even if you don't drive it, you can look on your cell phone any afternoon, from 4:00 to 6:30, and see the red line that sometimes goes all the way to Dunaway Lane, coming into Calistoga. An EIR should be done, again, on these annexes, so perhaps before this approval, it's approved. The combination of now trying to amend and throw everything into previous use permit almost seems as if it's a backdoor development deal going on. The citizens of Calistoga deserve fairness in development, and the precedence that it should set for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and retain the right to open it if we need to.
Kurt Laraku, 1707 Michael Way. I appreciate your time here tonight, and the last speaker was right on with her comment. This is a new project, it's a new piece of land that's been added. You can't balance it. Your questions, Tim, were quite good, but it never got answered as to what would be on that bald spot on top of the hill. Would that be more lots, residential houses? This project demands an EIR that's circulated. It demands it, because we've got a drainage problem that's in the EIR, the original one, that it's potentially significant impact. Now, I watched the video of the road going up the hill, I see a little V ditch for water to go down, and the water goes sheet runs down the road. There's a lot of things that are missing here. This EIR originally said, it said, "A new project drainage plans was to be prepared before the approval of the final map of the first EIR." Has that been done, Lynn?
The final map has not been approved yet.
Okay, so we still don't even have any, and that was six years ago.
Drainage plans were approved as part of the grading and infrastructure plans, however.
They're supposed to be sitting at City Hall, a project drainage plan was supposed to be prepared before the approval of a final map. So now you have a new piece of property, a new location, a condensed use that's supposed to, you know, work by an addendum. There really has to be an EIR that covers the whole project now, to tell us what's happening. The retention water for putting that big project on top with all that infrastructure was a big building, and all the things they're trying to do on a little lot on the side of the hill, there's no retention pond showing. There's no drainage. Now, we were told that they connected the utilities to the city at the Degarda driveway. Well, we have no storm drain that can take any water off of that hill. The original EIR speaks to it, all the existing drainage plans, and adequate drainage of the product, the city states that it's undersized, can't take that water. The new laws on building out of structures to take the sheet runoff, the road runoff, every part of it, and be able to hold it. And ever since this project came up, I wondered how in the heck they were going to do it. But now, they've taken that away, where they could have taken a side hill, and it would not have shown to the public with trees or anything else, and had a retention pond. They have no storm outfall. The only storm outfall is Caltrans to the river. So I'm saying this thing has to have an EIR on the whole project, with the new consideration, the new land, and it has to be circulated to all parties, from Caltrans to the neighbors. The original one, we had two full pages typewritten of people that commented on the project. So this has to be brought out in public. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I will again, close the public hearing, and we will see if we can answer some of these questions, and if the, Lynn, if you want to do your best, and if we need the applicant to come back up, we will do so.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to suggest that the project engineer address the two questions about the emergency access point onto Foothill Boulevard, and how it will be limited to emergency access only, and won't be used by project traffic in general, and also how the storm drainage will be accommodated.
Actually, I'll take the first one, Lynn, as it relates to the emergen-
Actually, I'll take the first one, Lynn, as it relates to the emergency egress, as very specifically, our easement through there is only for emergency access. We installed water and sewer lines to connect to our artery, or our connection point at the city there near Pine Street, and installed that trenching and a new driveway up the hill. But all resort traffic, guests, employees, garbage, food delivery, et cetera, all goes through our main entrance, and we have designed that road very specifically to meet all fire conditions, all slope conditions, and requirements such that it can accommodate that use. I'll let Jason Kirchman here, our engineer, speak to the water and drainage.
Jason Kirchman, BKF Engineers. So, there are three detention basins designed with the resort, two of which have already been constructed, so the way they're set up is they sort of sit back into the natural greens against the roadways. So, there are three detention basins which are designed to reduce the runoff from a pre-development condition to post-development, basically being the same. In addition to that, there's various bio-retention areas for stormwater quality put throughout, which also does slow down the water, the slow-it, sink-it mentality, that's also incorporated and was added since the original approvals. The hydrology report that was originally done has been amended, and was, as Lynn pointed out, was submitted with the original grading plans for the Medrond Drive. The moving of the facilities from the top to the bottom also doesn't increase the amount of runoff anticipated, because the amount of impervious surface is gonna stay the same, so net-net, you have about the same.
I might also include, part of our conditions is to accommodate for a hundred-year storm and hold the water onsite so that it does not dissipate off in a storm event. So, in other words, we hold the water and let it queue out in an appropriate fashion so that it does not adversely affect any neighboring property.
Well, so it is retention, not det, it's detention, not retention?
Well, for the larger storm events, correct. So, for the smaller storm events, the MS4 permit requires that basically your everyday rain event would be retention or treatment that goes through a bio-retention medium, and then the larger events is detention.
So, your retention would go up to what storm level?
The retention is the eighty-fifth percentile twenty-four hour event, so that's just normal.
And the detention basins you've mentioned, is that just for the service center, or is that project-wide?
It's project-wide.
Okay. It appears that you've got a detention center in your layout here for the, so even in your preliminary, I'll call it, plan for the service center, you already show a detention basin?
The ones that you've probably seen, those would be retention, not detention.
And that would be retention, okay.
Yeah, those would be the treatment facilities, not the hive.
Okay.
Any other questions of commission? Okay. I will ask each commissioner, starting with Commissioner Abernathy, if they would like to kind of give their position on this matter.
Well, the two comments during the public hearing both called for a new EIR, because the project was either a larger project, or it was called a new project, understanding that's really not the case, it's the same elements as were before, rearranged in what might be considered a better plan, although a little bit larger piece of property, but the impacts will not be increased as according to this new plan. Is that correct?
Yes, that was the conclusion of the addendum to the EIR.
Couple of things, there's, and I will sign on to Wallis, to Commissioner Abernathy's observation, we all spent Thanksgiving reading an environmental document, it's just that it's not a new one, it's an addendum, so it will be addended to the existing environmental documents. So, there has been new environmental work to look at this new proposal. The, I would like to, when we would move, if we move to a motion to approve this, to, I would like to incorporate as conditions what staff has written out today with a couple of small changes. Lynn, in your very first item of, in under A, where at the end of the sentence it says that, that it will be landscaped sufficient in height and density to screen the improvements from Sealy Corridor State Route 29 within three years of completion of the parking lot, or any structures, I would like to add to that irrespective of the Bingham property. And then, at the additional condition, I would like for the proponents to prepare a document that would be a conceptual model for how that landscaping will be incorporated within what this landmass will be. There needs to be some benchmark that we can measure by, and that if that could be prepared and submitted, and at least distributed to the commission, that that would, could be, remain part of the record. Do you understand that?
Forgive me if I, just to clarify, basically what you're proposing would be a document that would come in as part of when we, assuming we get our approvals here this evening, as a part of that application of the plans, we would provide also a planting plan that would outline and meet the specs that you're calling for?
Yes and no. The, I would hope that in your planning process for your final documents, that we could get an idea of what your, that proposal is specific to the landscaping and the land dedicated to the landscaping before you've completed the documents. It would be terrible to say, gee, this isn't gonna cut it after you've prepared all your documents. So, if it could be done in process and submitted earlier for comment, just as a...
As an iterative review.
As a feedback, yes.
Sure, no, we're happy to do that, yeah. So, I mean, in other words, again, if we're lucky to be approved here this evening, as a part of our submittal package, we would do an iterative concept drawing so that that could be...
Correct. I'm looking for this to be a tool.
Sure.
All right.
Happy to do that.
So, you understand?
Yeah.
Okay. That's my only other comment.
Commissioner Cooper?
It might be interesting to hear from the gentleman at First Carbon Solutions addressing Kurt's concerns with the addendum, get a little clarity on that, just to make sure. Specifically, is it insufficient, are the concerns he mentioned relevant, have they been correctly addressed in this updated version?
Well, just to back up, it is described as, originally, it's characterized that the EIR said that there are some drainage problems with the site. EIR didn't say that. EIR simply disclosed that they were going to do some grading, that was to have the potential to create, you know, erosion and water quality issues, so we proposed some mitigation tied to construction. And that, from my understanding, is currently, has been implemented in conjunction with the project. Then we also disclosed that we're also gonna be adding some impervious surfaces as part of construction, and they would need to install storm drainage facilities. The engineer there just gave you a summary of them, and again, those have been partially implemented, those also were required by mitigation measures. And so essentially, I would say this is, what's gone on on that side is exactly what was envisioned by the EIR, and this addendum essentially reconfirmed that, yep, yes, in fact, these EIR mitigation measures will be carried out, and in this case, it sounds like they have already been carried out, so...
Hi, this is Jason Braman, First Carbon Solutions. So, as Commissioner Abernathy noted, and Commissioner Wilks agreed, the project truly is, well, let me back up. So, there was an exhaustive analysis of the project as part of the original EIR. So, in taking a look at this project, which basically is simply taking uses that were already assumed in the previous EIR, and moving them to another location, the addendum certainly analyzed that in very much detail, quite candidly. There's a number of technical studies that supported that the project as described in the addendum. So, it was a fairly exhaustive analysis. The density is the same, the uses are the same. So, to your point, Commissioner, the addendum is satisfactory in our mind, I've been practicing for thirty-three years, so far as a sequel professional, it certainly meets the standards as to this type of project and what has been proposed by the applicant, so, my two cents.
Hey, good. I appreciate the clarity.
Commissioner McNair?
This project seems like a logical modification to, from the perspective of the resort and of the internal functions, and the location and layout of all of the functions that need to happen on this property to be successful. I do agree that it would be useful to have a little bit more information about how the applicant is going to satisfy everyone's concerns, and so modifying this condition of approval to include some sort of a preliminary process where they can submit a little bit more clarification about the landscaping and the screening that'll happen there, makes a lot of sense, and I would suggest that they include information about the colors that will be used, the height of the screening that will be included, it might be plantings, and as Lynn already points out, it might be alternative measures. Because I think that this would wanna focus on not only the visual aspects, and making sure that you're not relying on your neighbors to mitigate the impacts, but also the one item that came up in the letter from the downhill neighbors is the sound impacts, and I think these screening efforts will also have an important impact on mitigating the sound that would travel from the garbage trucks, or from emptying of the linen trucks, or all the maintenance of the vehicles, all the things that are gonna happen in this zone. So, I think that developing a plan for this area that's very specific will screen not only visually, but also help with sounds, so that that sort of thing doesn't echo across the valley like we know they can.
Thank you very much. This is my turn. So, back in 2003, when the general plan was approved, I was councilman at the time, spent a lot of time on it, and I'll read from Rural Residential, which is his own rural residential hillside, and the only difference really is the slope factor in it. But it says, "Lands designated rural residential serve as a buffer between the agricultural lands around the city and the urbanized parts of Calistoga. The intent of this land use designation is to establish a limit to the urbanized parts of Calistoga." Okay, that being said, I was also on this planning commission when we approved this project, and I had great heartburn, and it's in the record somewhere, I'm sure, about the residents coming down the hillside, the structures, and I had the same heartburn with, I believe it's called Silver Rose still, over there, and I've had so many people complain to me about that very thing. So, we're back to, I think, Commissioner Wilks' concerns about the structures on the hillside, what you're gonna see, the sound that Commissioner McNair illustrated. My problem here is that, and to be commended that these folks, the applicants who represent, they bought the land, created an emergency access, and that's to be commendable. But now to take that and include it in the overall original final EIR, I kinda have heartburn with that. Nothing seems to come out when it's finished, as it is presented on paper, and I guess at the end, and where I'm coming from here is that, first of all, we're taking more residential hillside, we're taking more of it, and what does that benefit the community? It didn't benefit us at all. I'm a citizen of forty-two, excuse me? Oh, okay, because I have a tendency to last meeting people speaking out, and I'm, you know, just let everybody have a piece, and if you would like to come up, I will definitely open the public hearing for you. Okay, thank you. So, I get to the point, I have heartburn, I really have a problem with this, and there again, I thought the project as a whole is fine, I, this very day, have problems with, there again, the housing coming down the hillside at Silver Rose, and I anticipate we're gonna have the same complaints, with all due respect to the applicant, of the homes that are gonna be built up here on this hillside. So, I think a lot more work should've been done, it should've been independent, on an independent EIR, and that being said as well, granted, you're losing less trees on top, and I think a question was asked by one of the individuals that came up, well, what's that land ultimately be used for in the future? Have no idea, maybe you don't either, but we have a piece of land that's almost undisturbed right now, and it is on a hillside, and there is no visual impact. You have eighty-eight acres to work with, so I'm gonna be honest with you, I have a problem with every part of this, and I'm probably the lone voice in the wilderness, and that's okay, this is the way the system works, but that being said, if any commissioners would like any additional comments, I would be more than glad to welcome them, and if anybody in the audience wants to respond to any comments from the commissioners, I will be glad to open up the public hearing.
I would like to make just a point in that the, we have a commitment from the developer that the net development will be the same. We have X number of square feet of chess pieces on the hill, and I don't see a detriment to chess pieces being moved around on eighty-eight acres, it's, if those same chess pieces, not having grown at all, now have a hundred acres to move around on, I see that probably as a net benefit. There's more ability to buffer and within the project, things like that, and it goes with the same thing with even the tree discussion we had earlier. The, I'm not seeing downside in this. I think that the environmental document, as I have read it, is pretty thorough as to this specific site, notwithstanding my suggestion about claiming a mitigation from a neighbor. So, I am satisfied that in the net, that this would be a net benefit, and I think that making, taking the backhouse uses inherent in this resort, which have been known and reviewed all along, and getting them further down the hill, closer to an exit point, has got to be a positive move. So, I just say that as a point of reference.
And very good, so, but it also extends the distance between the areas of common use, the dining and that, and the parking lot where it originally was designed, and where it is designed now, which then gives more pedestrian traffic, which opens itself up to more people, maybe drinking, maybe smoking, maybe doing things, and opens us up to health and safety issues, in my opinion. So, that kinda counters what you just said, Commissioner Wilks, but that's okay too. That being said, if there's no other discussion, I'll be more than glad...
One more comment?
Yes, sir.
I definitely see the merit in Commissioner Wilks' comments. At the same time, I also see where you're coming from, and my question is, could not these, your questions have been addressed before the property was bought? What just seems cart before the horse? At some point, you would think that some of these concerns would've been addressed before the leeway has taken place, and the property is purchased, and the potential work's been being done. So, what is the natural order of getting from there to here?
I have a question then for the applicant, based on what you just asked, why, and to staff. We ask on a regular basis for projects, especially sensitive projects, to come with a preliminary design review, simply bringing it for the commission to the public, and simply saying, here's what we're proposing to do, what you're feeling, and we would love to incorporate your concerns into it. Instead of spending commendable, you spent a lot of money to try to cover all the technical issues, and you did a good job, I'm not saying you didn't, but at the same time, you would've gotten the response from myself, as well as the other commissioners in the community, that you might've been able to address those concerns before you got here, at very little expense, and so that's kind of a question as to why folks are not doing this? Yes, Aaron?
I'll do my best to answer, but again, it is, we do still need, go through design review as part of this, we have development, design guidelines...
Yes, preliminary design review is very basic, very simple, preliminary design review is very simple, very basic, and you are able to really get the concerns of the community, that then you can address those when you go into a more of a formal approach.
Right, well, but as you know, and you, because you were here as part of the original approvals, we did not own this property or this portion of land, so therefore, it was not even envisioned...
not even envisioned or contemplated. We had those, that parking in all these facilities that are currently approved up on the ridgeline. All the, we, subsequent to the approval process, we were able to acquire some more lands. We knew that that element is a bad aesthetic, it's not something that is good for the top of the hill, so therefore we moved it down. And I think all the commissioners that have seen the property and gone through it can see very easily how it works within the context of the site. And, you know, again, it's, you know, we purchased and came forth and applied for this, subsequent to all of our approvals as part of the project. And so, you know, we've come forth with design and layout, and we will, as a part of the structures, et cetera, have to go through additional review, and as Commissioner Wilks has pointed out, given us another little threshold to conquer in terms of landscape and screening design, which we're happy to do. And I think, again, when you see it on the site, it makes a lot of sense. The site is an overall better project by implementing this element at this location.
But it's still an expansion, in your own words, though not additional buildings. It is an expansion, it is moving things-
It's not an expansion, it's moving.
It's moving, but that being said, with a preliminary, we're right back to the simple thing that we have all the time. A preliminary discussion amongst the public and yourself could have answered a lot of questions that came up tonight, and maybe I'd had a better comfort level with it, but that being said, that's-
Fair enough.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
The, I think, you know, I think it's fair to remember in terms of the original approvals, part of the original approvals and of the environmental document was really to outline a process. And the process isn't finished yet. We're just sort of in the midst of the process, and what is before us tonight is part and parcel of that process. This is, this is not final thing either, it's basically a footprint as to where something is going to occur. And as this moves forward, we will ultimately then have to look at what will take the place of where the parking was at the top of the hill, and we'll be able to see that and review that on its own merits, as well as getting down to, you know, what color are the window shades going to be. I mean, this is, this is all a process that's iterative, and so we're in the middle of the process. I think that the original approval outlined that process pretty well. I just, and I don't think that we're here to relitigate the original approval. We're here to look at this specific point, and I'm looking at it saying, well, this fits the process. So from that standpoint, again, notwithstanding the things I would like looked at, I'm okay with it.
Okay, I guess we can, yes?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that I think that our position on this would be very different if the applicant was coming back looking for more. I do agree that moving the chess pieces, in this case, makes a lot of sense, and once you see it on the site, it's really easy to understand why they want to do this. So I don't have the same heartburn. From my perspective, I understand the logic and the reason for asking for this.
Now, I agree, I think it improves the project.
Okay, well then, we need a motion?
Well, again, there's two motions to be made, and I'm going to ask for some conditions in both of them. So number one, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution adopting an addendum to the certified final environmental impact report for the Enchanted Resorts project with the condition that the aesthetics portion of that be given a, you're nodding your head, no, I can't do that.
Yeah, we can't change the mitigation measures in the addendum. The whole premise of the addendum to the EIR is that there are no significant changes from the previous project, and we can certainly address them through a condition of approval as you've outlined and amended-
So we can do that through the second motion?
Yes, and that's what I would recommend. You are accepting, basically, the addendum as it stands without any modifications-
All right.
On the premise that the impacts are the same.
Then I will stand by the motion as I've read it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Oh, me, I'm opposed. Okay.
Secondly, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving use permit 2018-2 and an amendment to the Calistoga Hills vesting tentative map with conditions as written and as I have discussed tonight and is included in this.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Could I just note that there's a 10-day appeal period to the city council of this action?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to matters initiated by commissioners. Any commissioner have anything they'd like to say tonight?
Yes, Lynn, and I did ask this-
Go on away, just to say all of it, clear.
Yes.
Cut all the consultants loose.
I did speak with you and Zach this afternoon, or this morning, but could you give the commission an update of what is or isn't happening on the four units at Washington Street that we had approved and had been sent back to us by the city council?
We have not been approached by the property owners with any redesign or another proposal. I had heard anecdotally, they might be considering reducing it to three units, but I have not had any conversations with them after the action taken by the council. I summarized what the concerns were. I prepared a summary of what the concerns were and sent that to them, just to, you know, when you resubmit, make sure that you address all of these, and I haven't heard anything back from them or the architects since then.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Any comments? None? Okay, directors' report.
So I just wanted to update you on a few, the outcome of a few actions you took over the last couple of meetings. One is that on the Buster's, Barry's, excuse me, Charles Davis's variance for the structure at Buster's, he did not appeal the denial of the variance. So he will be required to adjust the structure so that it meets the maximum height for accessory structures. And the city council at its last meeting adopted your recommendations regarding increasing the number of cannabis plants that can be grown for personal use to four, and also adopted the zoning code cleanups that partially arose from the 1514 Washington Street apartment project, most notably the non, cleaning up the non-conforming sections, and they were reviewed by the city attorney's office. And we adjusted some of the language in non-conforming definition regarding non-conforming lots that don't meet one of the area width depth standards in that they can in fact be developed, but they have to be consistent with, otherwise consistent with the zoning code with that development, unless a variance, of course, is approved. And I would like to suggest that you cancel the December 26 meeting because we do not have agenda items for that meeting.
So moved.
So the next regularly, excuse me, schedule is December 12?
Yes, we will have a meeting on December 12, then the Lincoln Avenue Apartments project is currently addendized for that meeting.
Is, will that be the only, at this point, the only one?
Yes.
What was the item again?
The Lincoln Avenue Apartments project on Upper Lincoln.
Okay, thank you. Well, if that's it, I will ask for a motion to adjourn to December 12's regular scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.[1793.69]